Town Council meeting, January 13th, 2015.
Morrisville briefing session, it's January the 13th, 2015, and the time is 6:30. Happy New Year to everybody. It feels like it's been a long time since we've been up here. Hope everyone enjoyed their time away, had some good time with their family and everything. And we have a fresh year ahead of us, a lot of important things to talk about, and tonight we'll help pave the way for that. So, without any further ado, I'd like to have Councilmember TJ Colley give tonight's invocation. TJ?
Thank you. Howard Manning recently spoke at Gale Adcock Swearing In and graciously shared his thoughts with those present. Not yet, Diana. That's council comments. I have liberally borrowed his words combined with a few of my own. I pray this day for my fellow residents, my colleagues on the council, and all elected officials. I pray for the President that he may conduct the affairs of national government with wisdom, bravery, and true justice. I pray for the members of Congress that they may truly represent the needs of the people and work in harmony for the advancement of all men, women, and children. I pray for the judges that rule the courts of our land, that they may balance justice with mercy. Grant all of us the gifts of wisdom, justice, counsel, and fortitude, that we may carry out the affairs of our shared office with wisdom, honesty, and selflessness. Grant to all of us the gift of respect for lawful authority justly exercised, that we may live as a united people showing love and compassion for each other. Give us and our county, state, and national elected officials the fortitude to reconcile the power of their positions with the needs of society. Let us strive to form bonds of unity and peace between us, so that we may truly become a more perfect union, one established by justice that ensures domestic tranquility, provides for the common defense of everyone, promotes the general welfare of all, and secures the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. If you could please rise, and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation, hundred hours, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is the adoption of the agenda. I know of at least one change, and I'll ask the town manager if there are any others. The previously scheduled closed session at the end of the evening is going to be postponed for two weeks, and we'll hit that in two weeks from tonight. Martha, were there any other changes to the agenda besides that?
No, sir.
Okay. In accordance to the town of Morrisville's Town Council Code of Ethics, it's the duty of every council member to be not only free of conflict of interest, but the appearance of conflict of interest. So I call upon the council to see if there's any conflict of interest with the agenda items or appearance of conflict of interest.
None.
Seeing none, I'd like to have a motion to adopt the agenda.
A move that we adopt this meeting's agenda?
Second.
Motion a second. All those in favor say aye. With the closed session being changed...
With the closed session being changed.
All right. Move the motion a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we have an agenda. Diana, we have two sets of minutes, November 10th. Do you want to go through that one first? Were there any changes to that?
There are no changes on that.
Okay. Any other comments or anything from the council? Can you need a motion to approve those minutes?
Move that we adopt the November 10th minutes.
A second.
Motion a second for November 10th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those are passed or adopted. Next set is November 25th. Any changes to those, Diana? Okay. Need a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Motion a second. All those in favor of adopting the November 25th minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those have been adopted. Tonight, we're going to welcome a couple of new employees. First up is Mr. Chief Todd Wright is going to give the introduction to Matt Laplaca, is it? Laplaca? I'm sorry. And I'll let Chief Wright take over.
Thank you, Mayor. It is my pleasure to introduce Matthew Laplaca as our newest firefighter to join the career ranks. Matthew grew up in New York before moving to North Carolina about seven years ago. Matthew has two sons, ages six and three. Matthew is a graduate of the Durham Technical Community College Fire Academy, class of 2011. He holds state certification as a firefighter, as a house material responder, as a technical rescuer, and as an emergency medical technician. Shortly after graduating from the fire academy, Matthew became a volunteer firefighter with New Hope Fire Department in Orange County. Matthew eventually moved to Marshville and became a volunteer firefighter here in 2012. We're excited that Matthew has accepted recently a full-time firefighter position with us to fill a vacancy. Matthew likes helping the community, and he looks forward to a long, successful career with the town, so we're happy to have him on board.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Welcome, Matthew. Next up, we have a new employee in the Parks and Recreation Department, Steve Dickinson will introduce Trey Altman.
I'm Steve Dickinson, I'm Park Superintendent. I'd like to introduce Trey Altman. He is our turf and landscape specialist. He comes from NC State. He was the Assistant Director of Turf and Grounds for NC State. So, he was responsible for all of the soccer fields, baseball fields, football fields for the NC State campus. So, he has a lot of turf, landscape, and athletics experience, and will definitely put it to good use here. So, welcome.
Trey, you know how to mull a cricket field.
I think it's a little short.
Very short.
Very short, okay. We're all going to get lots of experience with that, so welcome, Trey. Next up, we're going to hear from Jerry Allen, who's going to give us a presentation about the Winterfest Parade and recap of how that's going.
Hold on.
Or do you want to talk about Northwest Park first?
I hadn't planned on talking about Northwest Park at all.
Are we moving that parade to the park?
I think we canceled that part.
We canceled that part, okay.
Diana, do you know where it is?
Here, let me come in here, it should be...
I can find it in a second.
Yeah, is that it? That one.
That's the part.
Yeah, but that's going to be a PDF, and you want it to work with PowerPoint, and that's why you need to open the other one right there.
Got you.
Sorry about that, slight technical difficulty.
No problem.
Back in December, after our last parade at your staff meetings, or at your council meeting, several of the council members had comments about the parade, and some had input that they wanted to discuss. And so, we wanted to come back at this time and talk a little bit about the parade. We've done it for two years now. Before that, it had been done by private entity for a couple of years. And so, we wanted to give you an update on what the last two years have been like with the parade, and also, you know, in putting together our budget submitted, which we're working on over the next couple of months, you know, to get feedback from the council moving forward. So, here we have a summary of the 2013 and 2014 Winterfest Parade and Craft Fair. As far as the parade goes, as you can see, total participation in the parade in '13 was about 33 entries. Eight of those were town, fire trucks, police cars, you know, floats with Santa on it, those kind of things. Total parade participants in 2014 were 35. Here again, eight of those were town-sponsored entries. We had 33 and 35 those two years, did similar amount of recruitment each year, as you can see. We sent out about 120 emails, postcards, or other things to organizations and school bands in about April, you know, March, April, and the spring of the year. We then sent about 800 postcards to businesses in the Morrisville area, in the Western Wake County area, about 800 businesses received those in August. And then, we made follow-up calls to all the organizations and bands in around September. And again, in, you know, October, actually, which isn't on here, we went back and touch base with several who may have, you know, not definitely committed one way or the other. And so, there were several opportunities reaching out to businesses and organizations in the area. And as you can see, like I said, we had 33 in 2013 and 35 in 2014. Craft Fair participation went up in 2014. We had about 23 in 2013 and 32 in '14. And you can see here, that was after going out and trying to recruit over 150 craft vendors from this part of the state that we sent information to. Some of the feedback that we received from them was that, you know, several were already committed to other events that were going on that same weekend. And, you know, some told us that, you know, for an indoor event in a small facility like ours, it just wasn't a large enough event where they felt like there would be enough traffic for them, you know, or that the event, because it was only a few hours, was going to be shorter than what they typically did, and so they, you know, weren't interested. So, as far as the amount of staff time that was put into the event each year, we had two Parks and Recreation staff who led the effort for a total of the time you can see there. And then, the day of the event, the entire department, full-time staff came out to help with either lineups or setup at the craft fair or other things. In addition, six public work staff, eight police and fire staff, and 10 of our part-time staff who helped, you know, with different parts of the activity, for a total estimate of about 435 staff hours to put on the event. Those hours are not included in this next summary slide you'll see here. These are funds that were budgeted for just the event, whether that was paying entries or supplies or materials. This doesn't include staff time. This is just for supplies and materials for these events. Each year, we had $15,000 budgeted. You can see there, the expenditures went up in '14. As far as the revenues go, we had a slight decline in revenues in '14, and the recovery, you know, based on our expenses and our revenues of 51% in '14 and 27% in '14. We look back after the two years and said, you know, trying to figure out a little bit of what else were we in conflict with? Because as I said earlier, we heard from some vendors, there were other activities that they were in. We heard from several bands that they were either already committed to other parades or they couldn't do it that day. We also, you know, found out from the bands that the first Saturday in December is also SAT day, and so, a lot of the kids were taking SATs in the morning, so they couldn't commit to a morning event. And the ones that, you know, from this area were already committed to the Apex Parade in the afternoon. So, there were a lot of things that we found out. And as you can see here, some of the craft vendors were involved in some of these holiday fairs, Christmas holiday shops, and other things. And then, there are just lots of parades in this area in the first two weeks of December. And so, these are kind of the things that we were running into, that several of the, you know, nonprofit organizations and school organizations were committed to some of these other parades. We think that had a big influence on the number that we had, based on the amount of contacts that we made. So, in looking back at the, you know, parade and the craft fair, we looked at, you know, are there options that we can look at? We'd like to see the event grow, obviously, if we're going to continue to do it. We'd like to see it grow, and, you know, with all the feedback we were getting, we wanted to look at it and kind of consider what some of our options are. First thing, you know, obviously, we have the option of not changing anything, continuing to do the event on the first Saturday, and so as to not directly conflict with the Apex time to do hours in the early part of the day. Another option would be to try to move it to, you know, the first Sunday and do it in the afternoon. We could move the parade to Sunday and then drop the craft fair. Vendors for the craft fair tend to be, as I said, we receive more feedback from them. They tend to be harder to get, and because of the indoor facility, it's very limited in the number we can house. Or possibly suspend both events and consider moving those funds to either improving existing events that we do, or possibly bringing in some new events. We have several ideas that staff's worked on for some new events that we think could, you know, be beneficial to the community. Or, you know, last option being suspending both events and reducing the special event budget by the $15,000. One of the options I mentioned were enhancements to some of our current events. And as you can see here, we can, you know, either add some fireworks, possibly add a music performance at the fireworks. You know, the Easter egg hunt grows every year. We're going to have to buy more eggs for that, maybe do some more activities at that event. Bring in some paid performers, you know, artificial snow for a tree lighting event was another idea that came up. And so, all of these are enhancements that we could do. Or we could look at some new event ideas, possibly do an outdoor event in the spring, something like an arts and crafts or family-type activities, maybe a live music day at one of the parks, or, you know, possibly another, a few more outdoor movies each year. Those have been very successful and popular with the community. So, I know that's a quick run-through and a summary of the last two years of the event, but does anyone have any questions?
Mayor, if I could just say, from a overall standpoint, we're part of the budgeting processes where we look at these things. And so, I don't necessarily want to make any, you know, decisions in a vacuum without looking at the totality of all the events and see what the budgets are, and maybe have similar questions about all of them. I just wanted to kind of lay that out there. I don't think the goal tonight is to come up with a decision, it's to start us thinking about it. So, fire away with any questions or concerns or comments you may have. Vicki?
I have a few ideas that, they're just ideas, they're not solutions kind of thing, but we have a new park, I hear, that is supposed to open up in 2015, although we've had a monsoon in the last year. And our parade currently ends at an elementary school. But what if our parade ended at Church Street Park? That would have a defined venue at the end, depending on the date, depending on the weather. It would be a more organic kind of procession, because it goes to another town location. So, that's something you didn't present tonight, that I just threw out there as an option. I would like to know sometime later, how the staff time that is, how much staff time we use for East Meets West, because that's a day event as well. It's a longer day event, so there might be more staff hours. But maybe sense of comparison of how staff time is for some of the other events compared to the Winterfest Parade. Moving of the dates, I got November. I mean, we start to see holiday stuff earlier and earlier, sometimes in July, but if we thought maybe a little bit in November, that might be an opportunity where there's less conflict with the other communities in the area. And the last thing I thought might be interesting is if we targeted a theme for the festival and looked for some high-profile performers or something like that to kind of draw in. People like to know what's going on before they buy into the whole event. So, that might be theming, might be a way of kind of bringing more people to the table. So, just some ideas.
All right, thank you. Liz?
I do have to...Jerry, clearly, you don't, you're not coming with a recommendation. These are options, and you want us to kind of mull this over, think about it. And I agree with the mayor, it needs to...the timing is great, because we can talk about it at retreat as well and with all the other events that we have. But did you run this by Parks and Rec Advisory Committee? Have they weighed in at all? Have you done a debrief with them?
No, actually, their December meeting was prior to the parade, and so, we wanted to wait until after we had all of our, you know, cost information and everything finalized. So, they'll be talking about this later this month.
Okay, because I'd like, I mean, that's the idea behind having an advisory committee is for them to weigh in on these kind of issues. So, I'd like to hear their perspective and on the event, and maybe get some advice from them as well.
Okay. Jacob, the gentleman?
I appreciate the data. I appreciate the way you're looking at it, and in agreement too with some others, that we could look at the other comparable to what else we do.
Okay.
And then, as you do that, then, like the Easter, is there conflicts there with other towns too as you do that? I mean, just long-term measure looking at it.
TJ? Okay. Chris?
Any idea why this year we had both a higher cost and generated less revenue? Anything in particular that stands out?
We had one additional float this year, so there was some additional cost there. The largest portion of the increased cost was related to the band. There's a donation that's made to the band for coming, and they actually made a special arrangement and came here to do our parade, and were in another parade that afternoon. So, we agreed that if they would do that, we would also supply lunch for the kids. So, we had boxed lunches for the kids. So, they went straight from here to Suter Fork, had lunch, and then went to another parade. And so, the biggest increase in cost was related to the band and the additional float. The revenue decline mainly came from the lack of, well, a few of our sponsors that did not renew this year, who for whatever reason just weren't interested in sponsoring the event again. That was the biggest decline there.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you. I know, relatively new. I mean, it was revived a few years ago by Margaret Broadwell, who kind of did it on her own, I think, for two years. And then, the town's now done it for two years, and tweaking everything from the direction of the parade to, you know, where the big event at the end is. So, I think it's good to probably look at all these things and think about what makes the most sense. Personally, I would hate to lose the parade as an event, but I'm certainly open to making it better, making it more, less, you know, less weighing on the staff and your time. Because I know, having been involved in the Margaret Broadwell years on a lot of her meetings, I know it's a lot of time. It's a tremendous amount of time. And I, you know, I don't think it's any different just because someone else is doing it, it's still a lot of time that you have to dedicate to it. So, I think it's good that we're looking at, you know, how can we, you know, prove it or shift the resources? So, I'm all for looking at this.
It is a, it is a, well, when you look at programming an event, you have to start long ahead of some of them, some of them not as much. And this is one of those that you do have to start much ahead of trying to get on people's calendars and schedules. And, you know, another change that we made from the effort that was done before, we actually changed the week that the event was on, because some of the feedback we received when we originally started looking at it was that later in the month wasn't good.
Right. It just gets, it gets more busy the closer you get to Christmas.
Right. So, we had actually moved it up to try to do it earlier in the month, thinking that would help.
Okay. Steve, I think you had a comment, and we'll, so Jerry, we'll visit this during the retreat, if everyone's open to that, and really start talking about it a little bit more. Steve, go ahead.
Just a couple of thoughts. I mean, I like Vicki's idea about maybe like having another, you know, destination where it can end. And the other thing is like, you know, just an idea, we have a lot of international communities in Morrisville, so getting like maybe different communities to have floats, so you can see all the different countries, that might be an exciting idea. And I know a couple of years ago, when I was helping Margaret out, they didn't have, we didn't have the, I don't know, we had a craft fair, but I remember there being a picture with Santa, and then there was a book sale and different things like that. So, that might be something we look at. And then, you know, is there a way we can recruit more volunteers? I know East Meets West has a great job of that. I know TJ works on that, East Meets West, and we have a lot of volunteers that do that. And is there any way we can reduce staff hours? But probably not. So, you know, just, what I'd like to see is continue it in some capacity, because the people that I've spoken to, I think, like the fact that we have it, and it's something for them to look forward to. But we'll continue this discussion during the retreat.
All right. Very good, Jerry. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good, everyone? Good. Okay. Next up is For the Good of the Order. Want to hear from the manager and staff?
Thank you, Mayor. We have two administrative reports to give you tonight. One is on the National Citizen Survey, and one is on the Town Council Retreat. Before that, just a couple of comments. The first is, we got inundated with our first weather forecast reports today for freezing rain tonight. I think everyone already knows this, but of course, the town is ready to work, and we will be open unless it's not safe. And so, we have a process where we inform people on a hotline, and staff is here, and yet, we are conscious of the safety of our employees that come from quite ways around. So, we're prepared, and we have a hotline to let people know what's going on, but we'll be open and ready for business tomorrow.
All right.
Like to ask Blake to give an update on a Davis Drive McCrimmon project that we've talked to you about before?
Yes, we just approved this project for an interlocal agreement with the town of Cary, and that's for that Davis Drive pedestrian signals that we were going to have at the intersection to connect to the McCrimmon sidewalk that Cary was going to take about 860,000 feet of it to the Twin Lakes Development off of McCrimmon. Bob Schultz is who I've been working with with the town of Cary on the project. He called, he both sent me an email and called me late on Friday. We talked about the project, and he said that unfortunately, the project came in over budget, like the whole, the project as a whole came over our budget on their, on the major part of their sidewalks that they were doing, which is the base part of the bid. And that came in about $70,000 greater than what they estimated it was, and they're having trouble kind of balancing the budget. And he says that the sidewalk on McCrimmon was approved in December of 2011, but is approved on the basis of it costing $78,000. And that sidewalk is now costing, with our improvements including, is costing upwards of $170,000. So, that portion, which was outside of the base bid, was built as an alternate. It also grew exponentially and increased more than any other part of the project. So, in order to balance the budget, they had to, they're recommending to council to not pursue the McCrimmon sidewalk, and they did this on the basis of their prioritization schedule for sidewalks. And that sidewalk was really, wasn't one of the highest priority sidewalks when they put it into the mix, but it did kind of fit money-wise. But when the cost of the sidewalk grew to be so much greater, it's no longer a priority at that price. It is ultimately a temporary sidewalk if there's a building there, because they don't typically build a sidewalk that doesn't have curb and gutter. And so, the sidewalk they are building is one that will get ripped out when that property develops. That's not salvageable, so it is a temporary sidewalk. So, all this kind of plays into their decision on it. So, they've informed us that they're making recommendation to their council, who is approving the bid package on Thursday this week, January 15th, but without the alternate number two, which is the Morrisville project in it. I did express our concerns with that, saying that, you know, we did have an agreement. We've been telling the public for two and a half years since we put this in the budget, and it's been delayed and delayed again, that we're going to have some improvements for pedestrian safety at that intersection. And so, that was a concern to us, and we talked to them about, is there some way to salvage this project? Could we do something? You know, could we sweeten the pot a little bit? Could we put more into it? We do have $78,000 budget for ore costs went up from the initial estimate as well, from $53,000 to $61,000. So, I said, if we, if we put in $78,000, would that help? And they said, well, it's more of a council decision on that. It doesn't change the priorities necessarily, and it's not a huge amount of money. And I did say, well, how much, you know, do we have to put in if we're going to put something extra to kind of, you know, help with the shortfall? And they didn't answer that question, but, you know, they certainly, they know that what our interest is. And I did say that if we pursue the project on our own, they're certainly willing to help us with that as far as applying with the plans and working with, putting out the bid. We probably have to read permanent though, under our own name versus the town of Cary's name. But they have it all, it is approved, so it's an easy one to maybe put the package together. But to do it on our own, even though ore component is only $61,000, that's $61,000 when it's part of a bigger project.
Right.
When it becomes a smaller project, when you take the McCrimmon sidewalk out of it, and then it's doesn't, it's not part of Cary's $700,000 package, it also economy scales, it would be more expensive for us to build it on our own. And it would be a sidewalk that goes nowhere, because Cary's sidewalk will not be built. It goes back to their prioritization schedule, you know, for future years to figure out if it'll be, if we'd be selected to be, to be built at another time.
So, the final decision will be up to the town of Cary on Thursday evening?
Staff has made recommendation to not include it, and the final decision's up to their council, who is making it, they're scheduled to make a decision that evening, and they're going to award the bid to the contractor the next day.
Okay. I can say, I think we've been talking about this sidewalk, this area for more than two and a half years. It seems like it's been a lot longer. That is disappointing. I guess I understand that if the overall project that it was a part of has now changed substantially, and it's, you know, I certainly don't want to just throw money at a project for the sake of completing something we promised without it getting people anywhere. But, and the council can chime in here, but I would love to hear other options that we have. Is there anything we can use that money for in that area to help pedestrian safety? Whether it's, you know, more lines, more signs, more, you know, kind of low-cost things? I'm not, so, and I know I'm asking you that without expecting an answer tonight, but I'd certainly want to hear what our options are, assuming Cary doesn't move forward with it. So, any other thoughts or comments on that? other thoughts or comments on that? I know.
Yeah, I agree. I had two trains of thought. As you were speaking, Blake, I was thinking, okay, we have a couple of days, call Cary Council, you know, chat with them, and maybe we can influence and change their mind. But the more you, more details you shared, that didn't seem like that was probably even a realistic plan of action. But I agree. I'd like to know if there's anything else, how else we can use that money to improve the area. If you can come back with some options, that would be nice.
Okay.
I agree.
Is everyone?
Just for clarification, when you talked about sweetening the pot, you're saying that their staff told you that that maybe would help, but at the same time, it won't bring up the priority to it. So it couldn't languish at the bottom and be another two years?
It wouldn't necessarily change their decision as a staff, but, you know, perhaps the council would make a decision on that basis. But their staff recommendation still kind of stands, but it's not enough money to make a difference.
Okay.
And they didn't answer the question, what would it take?
But the pecking order, it still would stay at the bottom, or I'm afraid that if, let's say we did, we talked with them, and they said we'd split it within, and their council said, well, that isn't a bad idea. But you're saying, staff's saying it would still stay at the bottom of the list?
No, it wouldn't. It would just, if the council approves the project by moving, by deciding to do the alternate two, which is our part of the project, it'll move forward. Because council moved it forward, but the staff has recommended to not proceed with it.
So, okay. It would be done in the next fiscal year, according to their schedule?
They would have to find some money for it. Council would find it. It would be, yes, it would give them, the notice to proceed would be given. Basically, they would start working on contracts on the 16th of January, Friday.
I recall, most of our part of this project was just pretty much crossing the street in a safe manner, which may still be a good benefit there for their residents to reach our shops and things. So I guess that's, that's our main skin in the game. So I just want us to keep that in mind, that it still might be worth doing.
Sure.
And then they might put their part in later or not. But I look forward to hearing what they say, and then we'll have options after that, after we know what they do.
Okay.
Chris, did you have something?
Chris?
No.
Okay.
I wasn't done, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But so I'm following that line, procedure, procedurally, then if, I don't know, you have authority to say, you know, you could call up their town manager and say, we cut the deal for, you know, we'll offer to split the difference.
I want to make sure I'm clear as well. What Cary is not recommending is the sidewalk. The sidewalk's a significant cost. It's not our $78,000. That's the cost for the additional pedestrian crossings. So when we talk about additional cost, it could be significant cost, even half of that sidewalk project. Is that accurate?
The sidewalk cost is $110,000 if they're short.
Oh, I thought you said it was 70,000 short.
No. No, the whole project on the base bid was short by 70,000. So they had to bridge that. So.
Right. And that's the figure I was working off. So going, I mean, I'm just, you know, horse trading. If somebody, you know, I know people on the Cary council, I don't mind making a phone call and saying, hey, this might happen or might not happen. But if they decide at their meeting to, I'm looking at the reaction time, just his council, but that's fine. But I think ultimately, she has, the town manager could, it wouldn't take us coming back into session to do something. Am I correct, Frank?
Correct.
That's all. I'm just saying, it's, I think it's a long shot, but that's fine. Other, I'm looking at options too, because this part of town, they're.
It's growing.
Well, you have no, you have no connection to get to Morrisville. The whole Breckenridge neighborhood, you can't cross the street, that's the only way to cross the street if we want to go to Church Street Park, if we want to go Town Hall Drive. So I would just tell my council members that too, that if we're going to save the money, I would say there are other things in the area we can do. We can do greenway connections to RTP, which has been brought up before, but.
Let's take it one step at a time. Let's see what they say. I don't, it sounds like it's, it's not a question of, you know, whether or not this project is going to, maybe they'll approve the whole thing, including our piece of it. Maybe they'll just, and it sounds like what the way they're headed is, that they would do some of it, but not include enough that it would.
I understand. It's up to their council. That's fine. I understand it.
So, you know, by all means, if there's someone there you want to talk to and talk them into doing it. But I don't know that any of us are willing to sign up for helping them with their sidewalk cost as a solution to it.
No, it gets us to our side of town. That was the original thing, why I was, that's a big thing. But that's fine. I don't think we're ready to. We have a neighborhood that's disconnected.
Yeah. Okay.
Mayor, I don't mind calling Ben Shiner tomorrow to at least let him know what council's response was, just so that they are aware of that, as they meet on Thursday.
Okay.
I mean, I'll just, but we added a sidewalk from Walmart to no neighborhood, and that was over $110,000. This is 1,200 homes, $35,000 might be a nice thing so people could get to the other side of Town Hall Drive and Church Street Park. That's just my logic.
Okay. When you talk to them, could you also ask about the improvements on the other side of the road where the new townhomes are going in? If there's going to be any sidewalks built on that side up to Davis?
Do we know that yet, Blake? Sidewalks on the townhouse side?
I don't, I don't know.
Okay. So maybe if you could let us know about that. Is that, I would think that would be a higher priority for them, considering there's so many houses going in right there.
Because that corner is in Morrisville, but it's not developable. So I'm not sure they will go outside of their jurisdiction building.
That development's Cary, so it would probably go somewhat of the way there.
The corner piece just west of the townhome community is in Morrisville.
Right. Okay.
The Bakers, the Bakers.
Okay.
And there is some sidewalk there already, but there is a gap with that other side.
Okay. All right. Well, maybe that's something we need to look at then. And this money can go towards that or something. But Martha, appreciate an update when you get it. Okay. Any other staff updates?
Yes, I have one more. Diane has received a request about some election stuff that she's going to just touch base with you on real briefly.
Regularly, annually, we get a request to consider either changing our filing fee and/or early voting. The deadline's coming up pretty quickly. I think we have, could get information over to them fairly quickly. I did look at previous similar requests that we've considered. And it has not been a good option because of the cost. In 2013, to run an early election site, I think ranged in the area of about $9,300. I'm sure that cost has gone up in the last two years. We didn't have anything budgeted for that. Additionally, the location is somewhat of an issue, and I can provide the details of that. But it has to do with access and availability of ongoing access. So it's parking as well as access for the use of voting for the site. So for example, they would have to keep it open for the whole two-week period, and they would have to keep it open overnight, or you would have to pay setup fees every day, which range, that take about four or five hours and include another additional cost. So it has not been something that has been feasible in previous years. But I did want to run it by you and see if there was an interest. And then our filing fee, our candidate filing fee, I think, is $50 for the mayor, and then $15 for any council seat. So I'm just kind of checking to see if there's an interest to change or be further review on any of that, get estimates. But we are working on a short timeframe.
When do you need an answer?
Um.
Before the next meeting?
Next week would be preferable, if you could email, if you even want me to look into it.
Okay.
The other thing I would note is that for at least the last 10 years, we do have a nearby location that residents are very familiar with as an early voting site that will be there again this year.
Herbert Young?
Yes.
In Cary. Okay. Have we ever had an early voting site in Morrisville?
The only, the only time we had it was during a presidential election. And that, we did not pay for that.
Right.
That was.
2008, wasn't it?
2008.
Yep.
Yes, it was. That's right.
Cedar Fork, I think.
And it was Cedar Fork. But that was not our expense. That was not our local election. So it always, we have discussed it in the past, and it was always, they were, it was too expensive in the past.
Right. The other part is the location. Cedar Fork Elementary was not a good option because school is in session as well as the community center. So there's not really any parking. And they've also spoken with, I believe, the Hindu Temple, but then they have a lot of night events. And so it's, it's not really a good option in terms of keeping things open for two weeks straight. So, you know, I can look into other things if you want.
And this is for the 2016 election cycle?
15.
15. This year. This year.
Let's still ask them, look, consider it. Maybe just give us some time to think about it.
We had a huge turnout in 2013 for, I mean, to have a polling site, we might have similar turnout. Just depends.
And this is, this is for early, early voting. There is an option fairly close by in Cary. So this would be in addition to that, more than likely. So I tell you what, if you have thoughts on it, why don't you let Diana know? As far as the fees, I don't, is anyone that, is 15 within the ballpark of everyone else?
Yeah.
Okay. For filing. Okay.
I can say for the voting site that I haven't had any requests for a local site in Morrisville by anybody that has come in to vote. They have no issue. I haven't had any previous issues with it.
The early voting site in Cary, though, that would lead up to their October elections, not necessarily our November ones?
No, it coincides with, with the municipal elections. And I think they're doing it for consistency. We've had the same early election voting sites for several years. And I think people are used to having those voting sites in different quadrants of Wake County. And so it hasn't changed, it just hasn't changed, at least for the past 10 years.
But I think what you're talking about is, they have run, so unless they have a runoff, nobody votes in November. They all vote in October. Cary for their municipal.
And it doesn't affect the early voting site.
Okay.
But do we, I don't know, do we vote early?
You have an option. During early voting, you can go to any early voting site and vote. So downtown, at the Wake County Board of Elections is an early voting site. You can go down there and vote, no matter what municipality.
But we couldn't go to Cary to do it.
Yes, you can. You can go to Cary, you can go to Garner, you can go wherever there's an early voting site. It is, early voting sites are open to all municipalities. They have ballots for all the municipalities there.
Okay. For the whole month between their voting and our voting?
I beg your pardon, I didn't hear.
Because we vote in November.
That's correct.
Okay.
And so will the other municipalities, except for Cary and Raleigh. They're the only two, and School Board, that votes in October.
All right. So if you have any comments or concerns, email Diana. But I think unless you, let us know if there's any.
One question, I'm sorry. Not tonight, but do we have any, don't we know how many people early vote in the last election? We see it on Wake County.
On the Wake County Board of Elections site. It's all public.
Yeah. I don't, you know, just I'd be interested to see how many people took advantage of it. And so would it be cost-effective for us to do it, spend $10,000?
Are you wanting to know if the, if like at any of the particular early voting sites? Or is this like extra information you want unrelated to this decision? I mean.
Well, the last election, two years ago, how many people early voted at, when in Fitz.
General, at any location.
Morrisville. And who live in Morrisville, who actually went to early voting, showed up, not absentee ballot, but early.
I'll see if it's broken out like that. I'm not sure how the data's broken out. It may just be the number of voters in general. But I got it for you.
All right. Martha, you want to talk about the National Citizen Survey?
Yes, Stephanie is going to lead that one.
Stephanie, all right.
We're in the final stages of preparing the survey to go out. A final draft of the survey and all of the mailing materials have been provided to electronically. I have hard copies with me, if anybody would like a hard copy of that as well. At this point, the survey is basically finished. We're just in the phase of making final tweaks and minor corrections. We did receive feedback from council members with suggestions or questions. We did address all of those questions and tried to meet as many of those as we possibly could. The way that the survey outreach is being handled is 1,200 households are being randomly selected based on our GIF data. They will receive a postcard, and then a week later, they're going to receive a letter with the paper survey. And then a week after that, they're going to receive a second letter and a second survey in case they missed the first survey mailing. That postcard will be mailed on January 30th. The first letter will go out on February 6th, and then the second letter will go out on the 13th of February. We did post an article in the January issue of the Connection Newsletter, letting residents know that we are conducting a citizen survey, and to kind of keep an eye out in the mail if they're one of the households that are selected to participate. We also added the option to receive a web address. So if we have residents that didn't receive a survey but still would like to participate in the citizen survey, we'll have a link on our website that they'll be able to go and take that survey to submit their feedback that way as well. Their responses will be taken separately from the paper survey responses. So we'll receive a different report for those online responses. But it gives anybody an opportunity who may not have received a survey to, to give their input as well. All of the category options were included in the survey, including services that the town does not specifically provide. That was at the request of the majority of council. So we'll be able to see feedback on services like schools and transportation. Even though we don't control them directly, we'll still be able to get feedback from residents on how they feel about those, the potential of those services. The structure of the survey is formatted per the National Research Center guidelines. That's who conducts the National Citizen Survey. Some of the questions that we receive from council had to do with reformatting questions or changing the wording or the structure of certain questions. We were limited in what we could do with those, because some questions need to be formatted a certain way so that they could be used for benchmark comparisons. So you have to ask the same question in all communities so that we can compare how we rank against other communities who participated in the survey as well. We also kept the format the way we did to keep user feedback and consistency throughout the survey as a whole. Another question came up about the amount of time it will take to complete the survey. That information was intentionally not included, and that was based on the National Research Center's recommendation. Their reports and their research has said that giving a time estimate can be discouraging and actually affects response rates. Staff estimates that the response time would be about 15 to 20 minutes, which is pretty standard for an in-depth survey of this type. But we did follow the recommendation of the NRC to not include that specific timeframe in our outreach. Once the results are ready, we will bring them back to you and present them to you as a council. The report that we receive will also be published to the website. So the public will be able to see what our scores are and how we rank. Also, since this is the first national citizen survey that we're conducting, this is going to become a baseline of sorts for us. And so moving forward, we'll be making recommendations to council to conduct this type of survey every three to five years, so that we'll be able to compare and see how we're making progress in certain areas. So. Does anybody have any questions?
I have two short, two short questions.
Chris, go ahead.
If someone who's completing the survey after about the 10th minute or so quits, will we still be able to get the data from what they've completed?
Yeah. The paper surveys, if they, you know, answer five questions and say, I'm tired of this, and they mail it back to us, those responses will be recorded.
Are they, so they're all paper surveys?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, there was an online, you said there was.
There is an online option. The scientific, the scientific significance aspect of the survey requires that they're, you know, mailed and papered and randomly selected based on households. So that portion of the survey is paper, but there is the online option as well for people who aren't selected as one of the households to receive a paper survey.
Who are or are not?
Who are not.
Who are not.
I might add, I think that if you are mailed a survey, you are part of the randomly selected sample. But there is a code on that survey that you could opt to go online, put in that code, and you'll get captured that way. Separately, anybody can go in and complete the survey, and will get that data. They'll just keep the two sets of data together so that you maintain the scientific random nature of the mailed survey.
Gotcha.
Okay, that was my que, I'm sorry, now I'm going to interrupt. Because that was my question. That, anybody then can actually go online.
Yes. And then, so if I, if I get a survey, should I fill it out or not?
Or resident. You're a resident.
All right. That's it.
Any other questions?
I have a quick question for Stephanie. Have you benchmarked how long it takes to complete the paper survey, just so that we can set expectations appropriately? Is it, it's five pages, and it's really good information, and we added stuff as a council because we wanted even more good data, because it's a baseline survey. Could be as many as 20 minutes, so just to, you know, with setting those expectations so people would, you know, set aside appropriate amounts of time to complete it.
I think the answer is yes. We sort of tested it internally, but the NCS has told us 15, 20 minutes with all of the information that was already originally included was a pretty typical standard.
Okay, great. Perfect.
When would we expect to maybe do this again? How often?
Our recommendation is going to be every three to five years. You don't want to do it too frequently because things won't change very much from year to year, but three to five years is a good space of time to see if there are any kind of changes in opinions.
And can you think we might change the custom questions then, or would they still be benchmarks?
I would imagine that the custom questions would depend on what issues are prevalent to that council at the time.
Okay.
Yeah, the custom questions actually don't get benchmarked because they're specific to our community.
Unless we choose to make them benchmarks for us, okay. I had one other thought about questions 14 and 15, some of the categories. I don't know if we can bring that up so everyone can see, Paige, I'm talking about, but the term town center, it seems kind of vague, and for the use of the survey, when we get the responses back in order to be as useful as possible, I think that it might help the data if we actually call that Main Street. Because when you think of town center, that also includes cultural historic improvements, includes some park and recreation, because we're thinking about including that in what we're doing in our Main Street effort. So I think that when we get our responses back, we'll get a more accurate feel of what the citizens are talking about if we specifically say Main Street, because that's sort of been what we've been talking about for years, especially the last few months, and I just think that that would be a change that can be made at this time. And if we just change town center to Main Street, I think we'll get better data and that we can use when the output comes in.
I might extend on that. I think there's a difference. It's like a superset subset. Main Street is a subset of Town Center. So to replace it, we might lose some information. To add it might be a better solution. I don't know if that's how others feel.
Didn't it, did it once say Town Center slash Main Street?
It did, and we removed that.
Okay.
When we initially, when we initially drafted the survey, council was still discussing Main Street. Council has made some decisions about Main Street. Internally, we've off, I sort of threw out the idea to staff yesterday that really what we're talking about is a core of Town Center versus a Main Street development. As this question, both questions were designed, these are classifications, not specific projects, and Town Center, even in the current CIP, had a series of different projects, which is why we just changed it to Town Center. It's not specific project interest, it's categories of project interest.
That's helpful.
Right, Town Center to me is one square mile, 640 acres. It's pretty big.
Yeah, so I guess my thought is, in the next couple of months, we're going to have to make capital investment decisions about Main Street, the core, but people think of it as Main Street. We don't want to change the name right now. So I think it's important to hear, especially for number 15, whether or not people are willing to spend taxpayer dollars on Main Street, because Town Center is pretty vague. It's pretty overarching, and I don't think we're going to get the support or lack of support that we're looking for. If we're looking for direction from residents, I think a direct ask on this particular subject, I know that it's more of a project rather than a category, I think it would be helpful for us to have that information.
I think the only counter to that would be that they, we have no way to educate people what it means about, what does it mean, debt for Main Street? We don't even know what that means. So to get answers to a question that we don't even know what we're asking, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but I don't know that making it, say, Main Street, or, you know, would necessarily help without knowing what does that mean? What does debt on Main Street mean? Is that?
Willing to increase your tax rate or issue a bond in order to have a Main Street or a core.
By what, for what?
We don't know. Well, we're not asking them for what or how much on any of these other categories.
Yeah, but it's, so if you, I think we're, I don't know that it would be proper to take an answer to that question and then make a decision because of something that people didn't even know what they were answering. So while you may get an answer, I don't know that it's that relevant because there's nothing, there's no particulars. I think we're going to have to, I don't disagree that we'll have to have those conversations, but I don't know that this is the vehicle. Let's say you had Main Street there, and let's say 100% say strongly support. What does that mean? Do they strongly support eighth of a cent? Do they strongly support $5? I mean, what is it? We don't know what that means.
They strongly support and trust our judgment to move forward with Main Street. They elected us not to ask them what they want for everything, but to give us the authority to go forward in their best interest, so.
So, well, you may get an answer. I don't know that it's going to help you make a decision about Main Street. I think those are the different conversations we have to have, so.
I think on all of these, we'll probably have to have follow-on conversation, because we have that same issue with all of these items. I, I think I might be okay with putting Main Street back in there in some form or fashion, whether it be a slash Main Street or parentheses Main Street, I don't, I'm not sure what the harm is in doing that.
Or adding a category.
Sorry, I think what TJ is saying, because what I'm about is that, even if we assume that, you know, yeah, we want, we're really going to put both of them into Town Center, it's still vague. We don't know what that means either. It's broad.
I agree. I think all of these are vague. I mean, I don't, I think you make it a general sense of people's propensity to raise taxes for these improvements. I think that's what you'll get, whether it says Main Street or Town Center.
Tony raised one point, I don't know that this helps or not, but it's valid. For all of the others, we used the word improvements and left it off Town Center, so we probably do need to add that word. That would capture all of the various things that we've talked about with Town Center, which is Main Street plus those other projects that have been listed on the CIP.
If I could add just one thing, Town Center is searchable on the town website, so if people wanted an explanation of what Town Center is, they could find it. You know, making sure they understand what they're signing up for is important. Main Street's out there too, but the Town Center is a plan, so I'm a little bit worried that we might confuse, you know, it's the language thing, to make sure it's clear.
Maybe you want to say Town Center implementation, which covers executing the Town Center plan.
How about, it's not quite a compromise, it's just adding one more category, is that possible? Underneath Town Center?
We're actually maxed out on space. They only give us to the end of the page, and so our contact has already told me that our space is maxed out, so if we add something, that means we have to take something else away. So I would just caution you for that.
Understood. I would say that Town Center, as per Councilmember Sprague Johnson says, is searchable on the web, and as part of that, as the overall plan, it includes an amphitheater, an art center, a heritage park, and these are things that, the last time we went through the presentations about bonds, a lot of those did not get support. So I think now is the time that we can use this to benchmark support and to see if there's support still for the Main Street portion of the Town Center plan. I think this is a way for us to use this survey to actually add value and to give us information, and I agree with Mark, that we don't know exactly what that is yet. We know where it is now, but we still don't know what it is. But I think it's important to know, from question 15, whether or not the residents in general support expending funds and resources for it, and I think that's a valuable piece of information. It's not carte blanche. If they tell us no, then that's important to know as well.
Well, I would also say that there is, as was mentioned earlier, Town Center is a bigger picture thing, and that's still in the mix for implementation outside of Main Street. There's still pieces to that that are outside Main Street. So I think if we just had, and I don't care if we had Main Street or Main, you know, whatever we want to call it, Town Square to this question, but to exclude the Town Center concept, I think is, it's cutting out a huge piece of what our plans are. We talk about, you know, Heritage Park and Railroad Museum and whatever else, we don't want to exclude that either by just concentrating on the Town Square, Main Street. So, Michael?
I'm just in favor of leaving it the way staff debated it. There's nine districts inside the Town Center, so there's a lot else going on too. There isn't just one, one little piece.
And we might be able to get the Main Street, you know, information another way.
I do think it would be good to add the word improvements.
Improvements are fine.
Yeah, by itself, it, that was a good catch, Tony. By itself, it's what do you mean? Town Center what? Right. And improvements is not appropriate. I think it's implementation is probably the more appropriate word. I think I'm in the minority with TJ. I'd be okay with adding slash Main Street or something to that effect too, but TJ and I may be alone on that. I haven't heard too many people in favor of that.
Does anyone else want to add Main Street, Town Square, anything to that effect, or implementation?
I like implementation. I would be okay if we slashed it so that people could say it's, you know, Town Center or Main Street, that category grouping, it's fine. People are using that kind of interchangeably. I just don't want one or the other.
They are using it interchange, I am using it interchangeably. I, I.
All right, so Town Center implementation slash Main Street?
Or Town Center slash Main Street.
Okay. Any other questions for Stephanie? All right, thank you all. Martha, you going to talk about the retreat agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Our retreat is scheduled from January 23rd through 25th here in town at the Perimeter Conference Center. We have provided a draft agenda for council to consider in the interest of publishing it for the public. You may want to discuss it tonight and approve that agenda. You could do that now, or you could do that when you approve your future meetings. The agenda is, if I could just sort of talk a little bit about the agenda itself, the meeting would start Friday afternoon, mid. It would be an opportunity for the departments to come and speak to council about accomplishments and challenges and goals and initiatives in the upcoming year that we'll be working on as we prepare budget submittals for you. There would be, so the focus is primarily departmental on Friday, as we come back together on Saturday morning. Most of the morning is really council time to work together, to do some group exercises, group discussion of your operating practices, your working relationships, your meeting protocols, and then really get into some preliminary visioning. Then we'll move into discussion of some of the strategic items that council has been weighing in on. The overarching one is just a really comprehensive overview of our strategic plan, all of the various things, really a touch base point on the things that we're already working for on your behalf. We will talk about CIP. This would be really our first introduction of some of the specifics of our CIP projects that we're working on. Again, that will not be an ending conversation, that will be one of many conversations as we go through the budget process. The goal being to really revisit prioritization criteria that we've already started working on and making sure that we're capturing the things that you're looking for in that document. The next day, we'll come back and talk very specifically about our preliminary budget forecast and the things we know that will be affecting our budget that year. We will be talking about some of the preliminary information as you discuss ways to formalize policies for prioritization of roads and sidewalks, and then again, it circles back around to council to debrief and talk about next steps. So very strategic, a very high level. We, it's limited, it's limited on purpose for you to discuss in depth those topics that are really strategic. In the work sessions around the retreat, we'll be continuing to talk about some of those other things. You'll be hearing about Northwest Park and Crabtree Hatcher in our PCR report from our road conditions and solid waste. All of those things are also coming, just not during this retreat agenda. Another highlight, the last highlight I'll mention back on Friday, the real only external presentation is from Modis, our branding partner, and they will be presenting their research phase and giving you lots to think about our next steps in that initiative.
Okay. Any questions about the agenda? Everyone going to be there? Okay, good. That's encouraging. So thank you for putting that together. There, just as a reminder, something I think that worked really well last year was the ability of the council to kind of talk about their, what they've heard from residents and different ideas that they'd like to move forward, and then sometimes there are other people think the same way and things move forward, and so that is all under the Town Council visioning Saturday afternoon, just as an FYI, so, you know, be prepared to tell us your vision, that you have.
I'm continuing, sorry, I'm continuing to work, as the mayor mentioned, just frameworks, working with the facilitator to help you in your work, and as we put that information together, over the next week, we'll be getting that. We've committed to getting you materials to, for the retreat by Tuesday, the 20th. It may be midnight, but we'll get them to you. My one specific question is, is do you also want them hard copies, or do you only want them electronic? If you just let us know.
Are you talking about all the presentations? Okay.
I'd like them, well, electronic.
Okay. The presentations, as staff has been working on them, they will not be all information, and they will really be bullet points for guiding the conversation, much more than all the in-depth detail.
Martha, why don't you provide it electronically unless somebody asks for a hard copy, then provide them a hard copy?
Thank you.
Okay.
Do you want us to vote on this now, then? I like the idea of voting on the agenda, and I'd like to make sure that it all, especially the location, gets out on the website, because I've been asked about that.
Yeah, the sooner, and that's sort of my recommendation, the sooner council approves it, the more it's official out there for people to see if they're interested in attending parts of the retreat.
I want to mention that the location is currently on the website, on the council.
It is on there. Okay, good. Thank you.
So I have a question. I think last January, we had discussed ways of working, and we didn't seem to completely finish that conversation about council ways of working. Where would that fit into this current proposal?
On Saturday morning, Town Council policy, protocols of working relationships.
Okay, so that's, okay.
And also the risk compass exercise will probably touch on some of that too.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
On the, on our visioning piece, I know last year, when I was not on the council, you all had your presentations, your PowerPoint presentations, and are we, we're not looking for something that formal here.
I don't think so.
Okay.
It's not, it's not expected, but certainly come with ideas.
Right.
And if it means that you have to have a PowerPoint and that's how you do things, it's fine.
I like the discussion better than the.
Agreed, agreed. No one's going to be put on the spot to get up there and, you know. No one's going to be put on the spot to get up there and, you know...
But you can if you'd like.
That's really like PowerPoint.
That's right.
3D models.
If you'd like to do that, do it. That's fine. There'll be facilities there. Otherwise, just become prepared to talk. All right.
I will be sending to you then tomorrow the link for the Risk Compass. So that will come to you by email. It's a question inventory, and the facilitator's asking for you to do that by Sunday. And I'll remind you.
Okay, good. All right. Well, if there are no further questions, I'd like to have a motion to approve the retreat agenda.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
You've got to be quick. We have a, we have a motion in a second. Any further comments? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we have an agenda, Martha?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other administrative issues?
Yes.
All right. Let's, you can tell I'm speeding it up a little bit. I don't want to have people caught here in the bad weather, so I'm going to keep things moving. Why don't we start now with Mr. Schlink, your comments?
I actually don't have any. Wish everybody a Happy New Year. It's good to see a great crowd out here tonight. Drive safe when you're going home. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Frau Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to be real quick. I know we have weather conditions pending, so I don't want to labor the point, but I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. 2015 is going to be our year in Morrisville. We have a lot of exciting things just around the bend. And last night, there was a Big Ten championship football team, not to be named because I am a Michigan fan, but we're very proud of them, so.
That was a very close game.
Very good.
TJ?
We had my son blow out his candle tonight. Like to wish him a happy ninth birthday. Sorry, I'm not here there with him now, but the reason I'm up here is to help Morrisville be a hometown that all our towns' children, like Ryan, will choose to return to after they complete their education and raise their families. Each and every decision we make, every ordinance that we enact, every dollar that we spend is in my mind toward that goal, to help Morrisville become the best possible hometown for our current and future residents. So happy birthday, Ryan.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
I'm going to take Councilmember Schlink's lead, and I'm going to pass. Let's get everybody home by 10 o'clock, so.
Okay. Steve?
I think I'll do the same, but I do have just one.
Chris?
No, 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 no. Well, one important one, two important ones. In the newsletter, we mentioned the McQuimmon-Davis Drive sidewalks. And so as we go down this road, it may not happen. Are we going to do another announcement, or is that just...
Let's wait to see what happens. I mean, I think it's, I think we just have to wait to see what comes from these conversations.
And then I'm getting a lot of questions about...
The answer to the question, yes, we will update when we know something.
And I'm getting a lot of questions about Trent Street Park, like, don't worry about today, just, you know, we find out, just shoot us a note on when we're expecting that to open up. And I'll put my other comments for the next meeting. So thank you.
Chris?
I have no comments.
No comments? Okay. Just want to wish everyone a Happy New Year's and looking forward to working with everyone again in 2015. A lot of major challenges with the legislature, all the things they're going to do, and we got a lot of work cut out for us, so I appreciate everyone's support and looking forward to the retreat in a couple weeks.
Now adjourned.
No, we're not adjourned, no. Anyone for public address? Stephanie? Doug Ledson? Come up here.
Can you unmute that, Stephanie, please? I'm sorry until he calls for it. I apologize.
Sir, if you could state your name and address, welcome to Morrisville.
First, Happy New Year to everybody, and I do hope this will be a great one for Morrisville. My name is Doug Ledson. I live at 6505 New Market Way, Raleigh. I'm actually only familiar with one person on the board now, and I think she remembers me from many years ago when I was working on some other projects here. But anyway, I certainly appreciate the town's focus, I guess, on, I guess, the direction that they, you know, that they really, the vision that they really are wanting to put together here for some, as I think TJ said, to really impact not just the present residences, but also the future ones, too. And I think that's really great that there is that sensitivity and interest in that. And that's one of the things I'm going to bring up here. Actually, that is the thing, one issue is one I want to bring up on that vision that right now is missing, and that is on affordable senior housing. I, in fact, Mr. Hitchens has...
He just stepped out.
Ah, all right. Well, anyway, I sent him the information from North Carolina Housing to, that shows where the needs are in Wake County. Morrisville has probably the greatest need of anybody. Here we go. He can reinforce that with the report that I emailed him on the percentage of need for housing, what we presently have, what there is a need for, and what the goals are. One of the reasons for that lack of housing is the limitations we have on the space here in Morrisville. Because it is a more affordable type product, cost factors are a big issue. There is a couple of properties I've seen around here that I think would be ideal, that would fit, but they don't have the proper zoning. In other towns that I've worked with, where they saw a need that was lacking, I mean, they put tremendous amount of effort on addressing it as quickly as possible. In fact, one of the towns ended up changing all their ordinances. And just to give you an idea, we had a project we started on in January. All the ordinances were changed, a lot of it was following Raleigh, Raleigh's format. But not only was it, were those changed, but we actually had a whole development approved by May.
Mr. Ledson, I appreciate you being here. If there's information that you've given to Ben Hitchens, he can forward that to us.
All right, that's fine. All I was going to do is just show you the photo. I didn't realize that there's only a few minutes here. This is a project that was done in Holly Springs. We have a couple of photos. And this is something that, for the town's standpoint, we get a very high-end product that is affordable. There's a number of residences that are here that the parents, you'll find, have more limitations on their income and really cannot afford that. But that was it.
Thank you for coming to Morrisville.
Thank you so much.
We'll have Mr. Hitchens forward us that information. Thank you, sir. Were there any other speakers signed up? Christopher Hall?
Satpil Rathi, Chairman, Construction Committee and Trustee for Hindu Society of North Carolina. Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, we have here with us several members of our society, including Mrs. Sharma, the founder member, and Mr. Sharma left, but their son is here. And also, I would like to recognize our president, Dr. Neera Sharma, I mean, Neera Jagarwal. We are moving forward with adding running centers to our existing facilities, and together with that, we'll be making improvements, adding turning lanes to aviation parkway, which will make it safer for not only our members, but the general public. We filed an appeal with the town manager to give us credit for some payments that we had made way back in 1987 for aviation parkway improvements that were never completed. And we are asking the town to give us credit for that amount plus accrued interest in lieu, to take care of the payment in lieu that we have to make as we move forward with making the improvements. On behalf of Hindu Society, I would like to thank you all for your support. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak tonight? Okay. All right, then we'll close the public address. It's now, what time is it now? Time check?
7:15.
We have some action items here. I know it's getting close to taking a break time. Rodney, how much time do you need? You want to take us a couple months? Okay. Why don't we move forward, and about 8:00 or so, we'll take a quick recess.
This is an annexation, it's a voluntary annexation, and there's action tonight because council has to direct the town clerk to verify sufficiency of the petition, as well as setting the public hearing date. Those are two action items related to this voluntary annexation. This is an annexation, again, request by Duke Realty, lot off of Carrington Boulevard, little over 13 and a half acres. This is a standard process, and we have recommended that the hearing be scheduled for January 27, 15.
Okay. Any questions for Rodney? Do you want us to vote on these separately?
The two, yes. Resolution 215-003A and B can vote separately.
Let's put questions or comments up first before we make a motion. Anyone? Okay. Then let's go ahead and have a motion to approve Resolution 2015-003A, direct town clerk to verify sufficiency of annexation petition. That's the first one.
So moved.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any other comments? No? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, that carries. Next is setting a public hearing date of the 27th, which is two weeks from tonight. That's Resolution 2013, is it, is it 13, 2013 or 15?
Should be 15.
15, okay. So Resolution 2015-003B, set public hearing date for January 27, 2015.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else, Rodney?
Not on this.
Okay, then we'll see you back in two weeks for the public hearing. Thank you. Let's try to go through a couple more here. 2015-005, also with Rodney, appoint Chair, Vice Chair, Board of Adjustment.
For the UDO, this is an annual process. The Chair and Vice Chair of the Board of Adjustment needs to be, get a recommendation from the Board of Adjustment, which we did at the December meeting, and then the council makes that appointment. The, at the December meeting, the Board of Adjustment unanimously recommended that Mr. Felzone be reappointed to serve as Chair and that Teresa Lestaglio be appointed to serve as Vice Chair for the calendar year 215, 2015. And this is scheduled for a decision action at the end of the month.
Two weeks to further review this, and we'll vote in two weeks. Any questions for Rodney? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll see you in two weeks on that one. Next up is 2015-006, Fire Department Fee Schedule Adjustment. Padgett?
Thank you for your time. Basically, what the Fire Department is looking to do this August, the week of 17th through the 21st, we would like to host the first youth firefighter summer camp. This would be for kids ages 12 to 15. They would do a nine-to-four program each day during that week, in which they would learn about the fire service, along with fire prevention and safety activities as well. For this camp for this year, we would like to modify the fee schedule to include a $25 fee for the camp for residents and $38 for non-residents. And this would cover the cost of the camp T-shirt that will be provided to each student, a complimentary bike safety helmet, and then their student manual for participation.
Any questions?
I think this is fantastic.
Yeah, I think it's great.
I wish I had something like this.
Excited.
I'm late. Can I sign up?
We don't want to sign up. Can I sign up?
Shandy, it's been a couple of years since I've had a 12- to 15-year-old, but the fee even a couple of years ago would have been a screaming deal. So, you know, I think this is fine. I'm not going to make any suggestions for changes, but moving forward, I would think about maybe covering the cost of your time as well. That might be something to think about, not just the materials.
Absolutely. That's one of the things that we have discussed offline. We would like to use this first initial camp by doing a lower fee so that we can get some feedback from the students and parents as well to see where we might identify some areas of opportunity and then reevaluate that fee schedule.
Okay. Good. So we're going to vote on this in two weeks, then?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Thank you, Shandy.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Moving along, 2015-001, approved budget ordinance amendment to close out the NC-54 multi-use path capital project. Julia?
It's my pleasure to present to you the final closeout of the NC-54 multi-use path. Ed would agree with me. We bonded a lot over this project. It is complete. The town will be booking the asset for the multi-use path of 1,830 square feet. The repayment to the Parkland pavement and luau fees will be $198,509. The total project cost was $268,879.
Any questions for Julia? No?
Thank you.
All right. We're going to have a storm event every meeting. This moves a lot much quicker.
It's not going to rain now.
All right. I think we'll hear one more, and then we'll take a quick break before the next issue. 2015-007, approved, gets Greek, Phase 3 street acceptance.
Title says it all. Phase 3 is requesting that we take over the roads. Punch List is complete. Only difference from this, it's a little non-standard, is that home construction is active, so we are going to extend the warranty period a little bit longer.
Okay. Well, we have some of these items on a consent agenda in two weeks. Sounds like we could.
Probably all of them.
All of them, okay. All right. It's now a little bit before 8:00. Do you guys want to take a quick break, and then we'll come back and talk about the Hindu Society, payment and lue fee? So five-minute break, try to get back here, and then we'll try to close out the evening.
I'd like to mention to everybody, selective dip, description, recognition, prayer, giving remarks of the hand.
The time is now 8:09. We're still going through Item 10, which are new items. The last one we have to look at tonight is Item 2015-008, HSNC Payment and Lue Waiver Request, and Town Manager Wheelock will talk about that.
Okay, this is a complicated one. Mr. Rathi spoke to you during the public address, and I did receive late November, written requests asking for me to waive the PIL, that the HSNC was responsible for paying in relation to a site plan submittal that was going through the system. Rather than sort of read you what's in the brief, I guess I put a lot of effort in just trying to make a complicated chain of events as streamlined as possible to try to explain to you what the issues are. The specific request Mr. Rathi made to me was to waive the PIL fee. I have no authority to do that. The UDO vests with council decisions about the PIL fee. That is in our new UDO, which was really not in effect at the time that they made this request. So that's a factor for you to consider. But Mr. Rathi is correct that at some point in the past, approximately 1987, so 30 years ago, we have records that indicate that, related to one of their initial projects, they were asked to put a bond in place for future aviation parkway improvements. That bond was to escalate over a period of five years at 5%. That bond was to escalate over a period of five years at 5% to cover increased costs of those improvements, and at the end of the five years, the town would make a decision about what to do about that bond. There is no information about that bond in any of our records, and I'll acknowledge, our records are poor. I worked with staff as much as possible, and I think we've all been trying to capture as much information as was available. So, what you have is recollections of staff, some limited records, and we're trying to do our best to just provide you what we know. In 1995, there is a set of additional minutes that indicate that a payment of $14,000-plus had been made in 1987. So, it appears that rather than put the bond in place, they made a payment in lieu for those improvements. There is reference to accrued interest being granted on that payment for the time that we've had it, until those improvements are made. The amount of interest, the rate, is not referenced at all. It just references accrued interest. And so, there is nothing in place until recent submittals that really started 2012, 2013. And there's been a series of projects on the property. Depending on what your specific questions are, we may have to ask both Ben, or Rich, or Tim for some specifics about those projects. But improvements had not been made. There are challenges with Aviation Parkway, which is likely why the improvements have not been made. So, with this recent site plan submittal, and Rich would be able to answer that, there has been a lengthy and significant amount of work back and forth between the town and the engineer to determine the cost of those improvements. The transportation plan has been put into effect since that original payment was made, so the amount of improvements that are necessary are substantially more than what was originally called for in this property. And then there's this issue of whether a PIL is appropriate or not. The improvements that they're making are turn lanes, there's curb and gutter, they are putting a pipe across to help drainage, and they're donating some right-of-way. They have agreed to do that. Their estimate is that that will cost them $300,000, and that is really the minimum they can do in order to keep the road safe. The additional PIL is related to the median that would ultimately be required on Aviation Parkway when it was improved. So, the value of that additional road improvements is $75,000, roughly $75,000. That's 150% of what the estimated cost is. That's the PIL policy. So, that is the amount that they are asking to be waived. So, just in conformance with the documentation we could find, I ran various scenarios, but talked to Frank. In the absence of a rate, often, the North Carolina legal statute rate gets improved. Just for your information, that's where the 6% comes from. It's not pulled out of air. There's a legal basis for that in the absence of something else. So, that's the real... If you want to establish a value for what that original payment is, that's that kind of calculation that has at least been presented to you for your consideration. The other issues that have been referenced, or documented, or recollected are, there have been times in the past where HSNC has been told they would get credit for the $14,000, but with no interest. So, that has at least been discussed in the past. There has not been any ability to prove, and I believe the Temple would agree with this, and the town, we cannot verify receipt nor refund of that payment. So, what I'm working with is minutes that reference a payment with accrued interest. I've put together the information. It is your decision to make. I do not recommend waiver of a PIL, because you set precedent. You might have that similar request in other cases. But you do have documentation of a payment that has some accrued interest credit that you could consider, and that is documented in our records. I'm happy to answer any specific questions about my review. Staff, of course, is certainly available to answer specific questions. I've provided as much of the documentation about things that have occurred in the item. There have been some internal emails as well, but I've tried to provide the information that I reviewed for you to review as well. I'm sorry, one more thing. Mr. Rathie did call me today and asked for consideration for council to consider this tonight. I've spoken to him here and did at least explain our policies.
Open up for questions or comments to Town Manager, staff.
Can I just ask the first question, and just to follow up exactly where you left off, Martha? I want to make sure, so, even though the item is called a payment in lieu waiver request, the way the resolution is written is it's a credit.
Correct.
It is definitely not a... We're not waiving any payments here. We're acknowledging a credit for monies that were paid.
And we did discuss that internally by staff. The request was a waiver, which is why I really chose to do that. That is not my recommendation.
But it's the same result.
It could, based on your decision, be the same amount of money.
Okay. Good clarification. Frank, do you have anything that you... I know that you kind of reviewed this.
Having answered your question, was involved in reviewing the reading materials on the resolution, so I would support what the staff's recommend.
I think Steve was...
Go ahead.
I have a couple of...
It's okay.
So, I guess, maybe, Frank, I thought the legal rate was actually 8% and not 6. I don't know.
Right.
So, that would potentially... That's...
I really don't recommend a refund.
I don't either. So, I guess it kind of begs the question, but when I read the minutes from 1995, one way to read it was kind of like the... This was... Back then, they were ahead of their time, and did a PIL instead of the bond, but there's just no receipt of it or record of it here. But I couldn't tell... The other way to read the minutes was that credit was already given for that payment, you know? And that this is something more in addition to that. But if there's no... If it's unclear, I think it's only fair to give the benefit to the owner, the developer, in that situation. I think the burden is on us to keep better records from back then. Sorry, I have a couple of notes here. You'll bear with me just one second. Yeah. Okay. Why don't you go to Steve, and I'll go through my notes here.
We can come back to you then. Steve?
Yeah, just had a couple of... One or two questions and just a couple comments. I think, excuse me, just want to clarify that the $75,000 payment in lieu is in addition to... That would be in addition to the $300,000 of other improvements, which would include the term stormwater.
That's right.
Okay. So, I think that, you know, I've been involved with this situation, just, first of all, I want to thank the staff, Tony's, Rich, all of you that worked so hard, and all the HSNC members that are here tonight, because I know this has taken a lot of work, and getting to yes on a situation that will work for both parties. I definitely agree that this is a unique and complicated situation, because, you know, Temple was built 30 years ago, in 1986, '87, and there's just so much has changed in the town processes since then. The transportation plan, stormwater requirements, all these things. And so, I think that, in looking at that, sometimes I get a sense that, you know, in those years that went by from '87 up until the current time, there wasn't really any understanding by the HSNC of those processes. So, when they decided to do this expansion, they didn't realize that all of these things kicked in, and it was quite a sticker shock, I mean, just in terms of this amount of money. I think that I would... I feel more comfortable using the term credit than waive, like you said, Martha, because I believe that it... We don't want to give the impression that we're setting a precedent that we waive payment in lieu, and had this entity not made those transportation improvements and not done those things, I wouldn't even consider a credit, regardless of the entity. But in this case, I think that there's been good faith effort to make those improvements, diligent working with the staff, and also the burden on us of not having those appropriate records. So, I think that, you know, I think it'd be fair, you know, I'm fine with what you recommended. Moving forward, what I would ask is that any entity or business in Morrisville that, before they embark on any kind of expansion or plans, is to please meet with the staff first, so that you can understand the existing processes, because this stuff can get pretty complicated. And... But I commend both parties for communicating and, you know, understand that we want to adhere... We need to apply the laws consistently and fairly across the town, the ordinances, but I would look at this as one of those situations as a little gray, and looking at the HSNC as a long-term customer in the town of Morrisville, so how do we balance, you know, complying with our payment in lieu, with trying to do what is giving them an option to grow? So, I just, you know, thank you for all your hard work on this. Support it.
Chris, did you...
No. I think the only other thing I would add is, has nothing to do with the substance of this at all, but we've talked about this before with... I personally would rather not be briefed on something and vote on it the same night. As a process, that's just my philosophical view on stuff. I know how I'm going to vote, and I imagine you all do too, but I think it's better if, in my view, if we wait the two weeks and follow the normal course. That's just my two cents.
Okay. All right. Who'd like to... Any other comments or questions? TJ?
I guess the first thing to consider as a council is that the $14,000 was received, and that's sort of the baseline that we're starting with. So, if we all agree with that, then going forward, I think that the fair thing is that they would like credit for that money. And $14,000 in our bank account in 1987 became something larger now. And if the staff could figure out what we actually... What interest that money actually got, then that will end up being an appropriate credit. If we got 8% in '88 and '89, then you take those two numbers, and you compound it, and then in '90, whatever we got on our bank account interest on cash, whatever that became. So, that's an appropriate credit of what the money actually became. It's not some random number, state statute, or anything like that. It's actually what the money is. And I think that this council would then decide if that's an appropriate number to credit you, because that's the money that it actually became. So, that would be something that, if the council wishes, I think the staff could figure that number out, and then we'd have that information in two weeks when we vote. I see a... Maybe a disagreement on that.
I don't know. I mean, I don't know how you calculate, votes over 30 years, what your rate of interest was for your bank accounts. I don't know.
Well, I don't know that it's...
I just don't know how...
I think there's a statutory amount that we would have to do regardless of what, you know, what we were making in the bank account. So, I think it's...
If it helps, I will tell you, I did some internet research. This isn't Morrisville-specific, but what the average rate being paid on savings accounts was over the last 30 years, and applied that every year, and it was still a credit of $65,000-plus dollars, just contextually.
So, without getting... I think we're in the ballpark, whether it's they would owe us a little bit, or we would owe them a little bit, whether you use 6% or 8%, I don't know. I don't know that that's germane to the discussion or the decision.
I would say that the exact number, if it can be calculated, is germane to the decision.
Well, you're also talking about intangibles, as in, you know, they're donating right away. What's... Are we going to get an appraisal on that, and get a value on that, and take that off, and then give them a credit? I mean, there's a lot more to it than just this payment in lieu. I think you have to look at the totality of what the $300,000 that they're investing on a state road that Morrisville may never have to, you know, pony up any money for whatsoever in the future. We don't know, you know, what's going to happen with Aviation Parkway. But here's a group that's going to put in $300,000, make some pretty good improvements in that area. Many of them I would consider kind of off-site, even though they're required by our statute or by our rules. I think you have to kind of look at all those things and balance it, and if... Yeah, maybe it might be shy of $75,000, maybe it's a little bit more. The 75 is also 150% number. That's not the 100% number, that's 150. And there's certain... We've been briefed that there are some discussions whether or not that was even appropriate, if that's the appropriate mechanism to do what we're trying to do here. So, I think, to me, and I didn't mean to talk right now, but I just want to address those things. Are you okay if we hear from Vicky next?
Of course.
Okay. Vicky?
Thank you. Just looking at the facts and the situation, I really appreciate the road improvements proposed by the HSNC. That is a very important stretch of road with a lot of traffic, and to be... Seeing future improvements is, I think all of Morrisville is very happy, in addition to Carrick and so forth. What is fair is, we have documented in 1995 that we had that payment received, and we had interest that was agreed. What that specific amount is, what the interest rate is, is not clear. But it's fair and reasonable, I think, to credit them the appropriate amount that, using a method that we agree to on the amount. The $73,000 and change seems reasonable. I don't like waiving payment in lieu, because it does set a precedence about projects and so forth. But I agree to crediting, because it's the right thing to do, and it's supported in meeting minutes prior.
Does members like?
Yeah, I... Too. The documentation for the last three years has been ongoing. Before you got here, the interim Town Manager did a good job working with this. So, I look back at it, and the way I look at it is, I mean, there was a council back in 1987. They made an agreement. We need to uphold our part of it. In 1995, that kind of was validated, so we should uphold our agreement. So, I like what you've done here, staff, Town Manager. I've seen it work like this before in the last 10 years on other projects. The Town Hall Light at the intersection of Town Hall and Morrisville Carpenter. And then there were some issues with the Town Hall Drive, and the developer going back up to McCrimmon. So, I think this is what we've done before, what I anticipate that's happened, and you guys have done good work. The only thing I'll just bring up is, and I'm sure it probably doesn't require, but we don't need DOT to chime in on this agreement, do we? For any reason?
Yes.
Then, yeah. Okay, great.
Any other comments?
Can I make just one? I think everybody has done an excellent job. I think the burden of speaking on this issue, I think the burden is on us, too. You started us off right, Chris, so, just so I get that out there. But for those that may be following this issue, you know, clearly, this is a 30-year-old issue, 30 years' worth of tracking. Could you just talk, Martha, a little bit about how many other situations are like this, how we handle this today, and is this something that would ever, ever happen again?
I might rely on staff. As I was reviewing this, I did ask staff if we were aware of any other situations where we might have these situations that have been compounded by time and record-keeping. I think Ben mentioned that there are two traffic signal-type of things, and if you need more detail, but they're really not road improvement-related. And certainly, I think the UDO in and of itself strengthens the guidelines, all of the documentation that we put in place about how the site plan approvals go. Certainly, our minutes are more thorough. We would be able to go back and retrieve... We would be able to go back and retrieve financial transactions. And I think that is very clear. I don't know if Ben or Rich or Tim even want to chime in on that, but I think the processes are much closer monitored and documented than they were thirty years ago.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
If I might add just a word to what Martha said, we went to our source of institutional knowledge in the planning department, that would be Rodney. And talked through it. And also a few years ago, we worked with Julia to develop sort of a special system in the, in the finance records to track these different payments. So we've got a much better system for tracking now. And we know, and we can look at the finance records and see, okay, this was a payment for this and here's the amount and this was a payment for that. So it looks like we maybe have six or eight of these different payments, six to, actually six to ten maybe, over the last decade or so. There are a few from the late nineties as well that preceded Rodney. And that's, that's all we know of.
Thank you. Actually, one other thing then. I guess this, this question about six or eight percent, I don't know how to handle that.
If I could speak to that, I think council member Gardner's right, I had a chance to noodle on the internet here, it is eight percent. So my, the legal rate of interest is eight percent under North Carolina law. What does that mean? Well, the only day-to-day meaning for lawyers is if you get a judgment against another party, then that judgment accrues interest at eight percent. So it's simply a way of trying to apply a neutral number of interest. If you, as a council, decide, we want to give the Hindu society credit for the payment that they made and be consistent with the council minutes in ninety-five that said, give them credit for interest, what is that number? So I would say if you would just, whoever controls the mouse, if you could flash forward to the now therefore be resolved clause, the last clause of the adopting resolution.
It was up to paragraphs.
Yeah, so that's, that's the, no, that's it, that's it right there. Now therefore be resolved. That's the meat of the action you're being asked to take. So you, this resolution proposes you provide the Hindu society credit for interest on the original payment and lose payment. And staff suggestion is for these six or eight, it's close enough for horseshoes and give them a full credit for all the reasons that are set forth in the previous twenty-five where it has. But what council member Colley says is certainly another way to look at it. You could, you could determine, I'm sure, a reasonable, rational, average interest that the town made on fourteen thousand dollars over the last twenty-seven years, come up with a number and apply that as a credit, which might leave a small balance due from the society of, you know, six, seven, eight, ten thousand dollars. I'm just trying to give you the, what I think the range of choices are. If you're going to apply the credit, if you're going to give them credit for the previous payment and apply an interest factor, or you're going to say it's close enough, wash it out, or should, you want to just do a precise calculation? The other thing I would say to council member Gardner's point is that, as we have done in the past, when the matter is on briefing and you want to push it to a vote, that is against our operating rules. You can waive the rules with a two-thirds vote, but otherwise you typically don't vote on briefing item on briefing session night.
And I know that, this is a thirty-year, the story began a long time ago and I know, I know the members are anxious to get things going and I know that they're anxious to make these road improvements and everything. I get all that, but I also understand that we're under our own rules. Is there anyone that wants, wants to suspend the rules to vote on it tonight, otherwise it will be voted on in two weeks?
Can I make a comment about that? I think I would, because we're making some changes on the fly here and making changes on the fly is never a good thing. And I get, to your point, Frank, the now therefore is the most important paragraph, but up in the resolution, it references six percent and some, I would really rather we do this cleanly and that everything be updated appropriately with the correct percentage and that all be reflected correctly for HSNC and then we vote on this and it's clean in two weeks. That would be my preference, to make sure we're doing this right. And that would also help Chris with his heartburn, which I totally understand.
Okay. So Frank, if you could just solidify your understanding of the eight percent as, and acknowledge TJ's point about different ways to do this, I would say that playing, you know, the other side of the field here, that they could also come up with, I guarantee you can come up with a twelve percent return reasonably based upon investments that have been made or whatever. So I don't think we want to get into this whose rate are we going to use. I like the fact that there's a stated rate that's been out there that, that can be applied here and I think that's probably the appropriate way. We, I, whenever I look at these things, I look at, you know, litigation and what, what would this, how would this, how would this be in court? And I know, I know the Hindu society is not, not that way as far as lawsuits and everything, but I would not want to necessarily defend our records or lack thereof in a court of law. And I think you have to weigh all these risks as we do in all, in all legal situations. So I think I get a consensus that we want to, we'll vote on this in two weeks. Frank, if you could fine-tune the percentage, verify what you're thinking with the eight percent and if that's the true rate, then insert that into the language and we'll vote on it on two weeks as a credit and not a waiver.
Can I speak?
Absolutely.
I believe that we do have consensus that it should be a credit and not a waiver. I don't necessarily think that we have a consensus that eight percent. I think it would be useful and I encourage the council to allow staff to calculate the amount as closely as possible to what that fourteen thousand actually became in our bank account. And with that information, I think this council can make a good informed decision about how much credit to apply. So I'd like to hear from other council members on that, please.
I'm good with the eight percent.
I'm happy with the eight percent.
I'm fine with the eight percent.
Me too.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for your time and thank you to the members that were here tonight. Understand our procedures when it comes to the delay. We look forward to hopefully resolution in two weeks and lots of building on aviation. Okay? Anything else, Martha? Okay. All right. Thank you very, next item is item number eleven, work session legislative agenda.
I want to give them a minute.
We don't usually get a round of applause.
Is it ever happened? Get a round of applause.
Hold the applause to the actual vote.
Hey, don't touch your. So Martha, you going to brief us on this? I hope everyone had a opportunity to kind of look this over. This is an important part of what we do every year, setting up kind of our goals and, Martha, you ready to take it? Okay. Let's turn it over to you then.
So tomorrow's the big day. The session convenes tomorrow. It is a one-day organizational session. They will really vote on Speaker of the House, offices, committees, et cetera. Just FYI, the nominee for Speaker of the House is Tim Moore from Kings Mountain and Paul Stam from Wake County is the pro temp nominee and they will take those votes tomorrow. After that day, they actually adjourn again until the twenty-eighth of January where they start their sessions. Just facts and figures, the GOP, the Republican Party holds veto-proof majorities in both the House and Senate. There's the breakdown of Republicans to Democrats and really the change since the last session. Just a little bit about how they meet, they follow a fairly typical schedule where the House and the Senate meet on Monday evenings and then Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. The committee meetings are usually held in the mornings and in late afternoons. Every bill goes through at least one committee before it gets discussed on a House floor and then members are usually in their districts or taking care of constituent business on Fridays. That's just important for some of the stuff we'll talk about in the future. Just provided who our representatives are, just a little bit of change. John Alexander is now representing District fifteen. Senator Stein is still our Mooresville representative in the Senate. And then in the House, there are two new members, Gail Adcock, who we know from Carrick and is our representative, and Gary Pendleton in District forty-nine. And then of course Marilyn Avila is also one of our Mooresville representatives. Just a quick overview of our legislative agenda that we adopted last year. We advocated in support of privileged license reform while we were looking for ways to address those things. We wanted further study. Of course, we all know that that authority was repealed, affected us for this current year budget and will more fully impact us beginning in July one, two thousand and fifteen. So that's obviously something we'll be talking about through our budget. The mayor, or excuse me, the governor did make a commitment when he signed that legislation into law, I see some skepticism up there, to address those revenue shortfalls during the two thousand and fifteen long session. And we can anticipate that there will just be that continued discussion of focusing on broadening the sales tax base and local option sales tax. For those that I've talked to one-on-one, I think you already know my position that even if they introduce this on day one, it is, it is not likely that we're going to know what's going on as we go through our budget. We're going to be working in an uncertain environment as we go through on this matter. We also supported implementation of the Jordan Lake rules, they didn't listen to us. Continued delay in implementation and the testing of the solar bees is underway.
Are you on the council then?
There was a House Bill one fifty that dealt with zoning, design and aesthetic controls. We opposed the passage of that. At the end of last session, it was referred to the Committee on Rules and Operations in the Senate. It is still sitting there. And updated information from Ben is really what town council may want to consider is support of broader discussion of aesthetic-based design standards rather than just opposing this bill, which, which could come up in this session. It is on the League Advocacy Goal Agenda, which we'll talk about in a minute. Our last item was the historic rehabilitation tax credits and we were requesting an extension of those. They sunsetted in July?
January first.
January first. So my date's wrong, I apologize for that. So they have sunset, but there has been discussion by some state leaders asking those to be reintroduced and there is a movement underway to try to get support for that position. The League Advocacy Goals Conference was held December eleventh. Tim and I, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, Councilmember Rau, Councilmember Colley, all participated in that process. We narrowed legislative, there was like forty-one goals submitted by various municipalities in a range of areas. Our goal was to narrow those down to the top twenty-five. There were also regulatory goals, seven were available for us to narrow down to five and then two federal goals, both were considered and both were approved. Just important to note, and this was something that was discussed during the conference, that any issue that comes up that affects municipalities and towns, the League will advocate on our behalf. They will always be seeking, if anything comes out of the woodwork, to advocate to protect cities and towns. The municipal goals are really things that they actively follow, monitor, support, oppose, work on our behalf. Those advocacy goals are all based in these, one, two, seven core municipal principles. You've probably seen these before, really, and these are the things, if, if anything comes up that touches one of those areas, the League is going to get involved and advocate on our behalf. The twenty-five goals that were approved this year, I gave you a separate handout of the specific goals, that was, that was a supplemental handout for you to have, but these are the real breakdown of areas that they were in. General government transportation, there were ten proposed that were narrowed down to six. Infrastructure, environmental utilities, six proposed, half were approved. Land use planning, originally ten, approved six. Tax and finance, ten out of fifteen. I think it's probably pretty clear where the focus usually is from municipalities, which is on revenues and finances and things like that. As we, as we start the session and work through the session, there's a number of things that we will do on an ongoing basis. They will just happen to keep you informed. Staff is going to be monitoring and tracking items of interest, providing you periodic updates. You, you have access to, we can get them for you. You can sign up through email for newsletters from the, the League on items. There's ways to track bills both on the legislative side and through the League. And then we've already got a town hall day. A number of us participated in that last year. It's a way to meet legislatures, form those relationships, not only with the legislatures, but the chief of staff, that is very helpful. You know, candidly, they don't want to just hear from us when we want something, they want to develop those relationships. We've also got some specific tools we can use through the General Assembly website. They also have ways to track bills. You can sign up for calendar notice for specific things you're interested in. You can listen to some chamber hearings in session and in some of the committee rooms. And they also have a dashboard report out there that they sort of keep track and tell you where things are. You can even get it on your iPhone, a mobile site that you can get information on the As we advocate on our behalf, some of the things I heard from the legislatures as, as we worked with them last year, they, they do like those visits rather than just when there, there's an ask. They want to know what's going on in town. We, we can and probably should invite them to events so that when they're available to come, they can come. We could consider hosting them tours of towns on Fridays when we know they're, they're going to be in the area. We've talked a couple times about actually hosting a meeting of the delegation. It will get harder and harder to do that, but if it's something you're interested in, staff will certainly make an effort to try to do that. And if we want to, again, adopt a formal legislative agenda for two thousand and fifteen, we could do that at our next council meeting so that it would be ready before the session started the next day. Is that urgent? No, that we would be able to talk about that on February if we needed more time to do that as well. Some of the things you can consider as we put forth the legislative agenda is clearly endorsing or supporting that League advocacy agenda. We could reconsider adopting our pending two thousand and fourteen items. The one item we've talked about that, that would take special legislation is, is related to bond referendums in non-election years for us. I know in speaking for Mr. Hartman, Wake County is interested in this, they will adopt it as part of their advocacy agenda and they have no expectation that it will get any traction. And then any other particular items of interest that we could talk about and, and staff is willing to do any research, review, if there's specific topics you want us to look at that we could bring back to you to consider for an agenda.
Okay. Good. Answer any questions?
So our action items are do some more homework, come prepared in two weeks to talk about this a little bit more. We can have an additional work session in two weeks, Sam?
We can, I, it's sort of open-ended, we can proceed in any way you want to.
How's that sound? Can we, can we go ahead and do that? I, I don't want to get this into February. I think if we put our mind to it, we can, we can get some stuff organized and have it. Is that okay if we shoot for two weeks to have a, kind of a more detailed discussion? If we shoot for two weeks to have a, kind of a more detailed discussion?
And potentially add some items to the list. Okay, yeah, I'm fine with that, let's do that. Because there are a few I want, I, I thought I would ask us to consider, related to transportation, but, and it would just be one, there are already items that are on the League's list of goals, that we may want to also consider highlighting.
So would that, so one of the things to do would be for us to look through the entire NCLM agenda, and just make sure that all of those are good, in case we want to, are we thinking that we might want to pick some of those out? And, and remove them? And also pick some out to highlight?
Pick some out to highlight and put on our town of Mooresville agenda.
They'll do their own agenda, and will do our own.
But one of the, is also endorsing that one, if we are thinking about doing that.
We have that discussion.
So, if we're thinking about endorsing it, would be, do that, taking some of those out, so that we're more comfortable with it? Or it'd be pretty much?
I think it's all or nothing type of thing, if you're going to support the agenda.
Okay.
You support the agenda, I wouldn't say we'll support it, except for these three items.
Okay.
You know.
I would agree with that philosophy.
Kind of realizing, realizing what, what this is. This, this makes us feel good that we're doing something?
Mm-hmm.
To be honest with you, the reality is, what does it, what does it really do? I think, I think we should do it, I'm not saying don't do it, but it's, it makes us feel good that we're putting something forward. The, the key to it is these follow-ups, and I think you had a good suggestion offline about, you know, trying to have, have, you know, the group here, or something, or have, you know, have, you know, follow through on things like that. I think that's probably more powerful than this thing that every town's going to give them. I mean, there's all, we're not the only, not just two of them, they're going to get stacks of these.
Okay.
But it's good that we do it, but just be, you have to be realistic about the effect of it, and I think our most effective thing is personal relationships, and meeting, and kind of, and I think we've all done that, so.
I think the list also helps us focus. So when we hear some things coming, or there's some discussion, we can react appropriately in a timely fashion, so it's, it's good to have that focus.
So we can speak to the list and say, yes, this group already is in favor of that, so we don't need to wait till our next session to actually speak on behalf of the council, because we can just quote it.
Right, and, and setting it up at the beginning of the year is great.
And I think, Liz, we typically would do three, four items, something like that? Is it any, is it more than that, or?
I think you're right. I think typically we've not had a big laundry list, we've kept it kind of short-sweet, but...
We've debated on including everything everyone wants, and then they don't read the darn thing at all, versus maybe really zoning in on three or four things that we feel good about.
And we, actually, we just talked about four of them, so that, yeah, not, not a big, big list. I would agree with that.
Steve?
Yeah, just, I know when we did, thank you TJ. We did Town Hall Day last year, we, we went and just basically went to some of the sessions, and then we just were really aggressive, we're trying to go meet as many people. I think that's a great idea. I, I know TJ and I talked about this earlier today, I think the other thing is, if we can, I'd like to get, like, the Wake delegation, if we could get some kind of a meeting here in Mooresville with them, where we could get their undivided attention, because having lunch was great last year, but I still feel like it was just really hard to, you know, I really want, not only Senator Stein and Representative Adcock, but even people in the majority, like Senator Behringer and Representative Avila, all of them, because I think it would be helpful. I mean, we've had Speaker Tillis here in the past, years ago, he came here and sat with us here, remember? So something like that, I think, would be very helpful. I know it's hard to get on their schedule, but, you know, Mooresville's, the entire town of Mooresville's in Josh Stein's district, and I really would like him to come down here and sit with us for an hour, hour, you know, and I think it's a perfectly reasonable request, and I would like, you know, so.
I think a breakfast meeting, I think you're on the right track, TJ, and I think a breakfast meeting might be the best, quite frankly, to get them, I've always heard that that was better than...
Freedom.
Well, food has to be involved, that was given, but, better than like an afternoon or an evening, a breakfast meeting might be, well...
Oh, they could, that's a good idea. All right, so...
Sorry, Chris.
I'm sorry, Chris.
That's all right.
I'm, I'm getting used to where everyone is now.
I know.
I thought Martha's point about periodic calls, emails, contact, not just when you need something, that is critical, and it's, I think it's almost more important to make those random calls and contacts just to say, hey, than when you need something, because when you do need something, it's kind of more surprising that, oh wow, he's finally going to ask for something, maybe I should... But yeah, I also like the idea of setting up a, a breakfast or something with our Wake delegation for that reason, so maybe at the next meeting, we can have some ideas and dates or something. I think it's a good, great idea.
Yeah, I think those are great ideas.
But just about the process, in two weeks, we're already talking and voting about it, how do we get the broad strokes of, like, Liz's, the things that you want to propose? How will we learn those? Will we learn those in two weeks? Will you say them? Or how do we know about them in advance, so we know that we're not just hearing and voting right away, like?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind hearing if, if you have any thoughts now, not to put anybody on the spot.
Well, I can give them to you, or, or I can email, but there were only, the, the only ones that I, really, there were only two extra ones. The, the one about support legislation, enabling, enabling municipalities to access a portion of proceeds of any statewide transportation bond, if that was one we wanted to kind of highlight as our own, and then, we actually have most of these, and then the other one was, seek legislation to authorize a state bond to provide low-cost loans to local governments and authorities for infrastructure. The rest we already have, those are the only two, actually, that I thought, and I can put those in an email and highlight them again, so you can all, because there's more than just this one line, too, there's kind of detail behind them, but I'll be happy to share them.
Okay, so that would be the process, if we go through that NCLM list, if there's something that we want to elevate and discuss as one of our primaries, that's how we'll communicate that in advance.
Sure.
Because that first one, if Mr. Governor Cory goes forward with that $1 billion bond, that would be important.
That, that's exactly what that is all about, it's referencing that, that's exactly that.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll do some homework over the next couple weeks, and hit it again, but good discussion.
We have consensus to have in Mooresville, try to set up a delegation.
As far as, for the Town Hall Day?
No, for the, having them come.
Breakfast or whatever.
Given staff direction to...
Yeah, they're, they're going to work on that.
Okay.
Martha, you got that?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, if there are no further, anything else on the, on the side, Martha? Okay. Next section are announcements, actually, this, I'm going to add one of this, this, this Friday, I was invited to be a part of the, you know, we have a National Guard unit over near the airport, and there are a group of them, the 638th Support Battalion is being deployed to Kuwait to help with Operation During Freedom, they're doing the send-off of that, and then many of us will be there, so I appreciate, you know, those that are going to be there. I did find out that they, they're, they're very excited about all the Mooresville people that are going to be there, because this is, you know, it's based there, this is a group out of the one near the airport. Congressman Price is, will be there, along with some state representatives, Avila, Greer Martin, Jim Hartman from Wake County, Gene Weeks from Wake County, Secretary Frank Perry, and a lot of very distinguished military folks will be there as part of this thing, and they've asked me to speak, so I will be thanking them for, you know, making Mooresville their home, and thanking them for what they do for our country, so that should be a great event, that's Friday night. The following week, on the 22nd, 25th, is our highly anticipated retreat. Everyone come energized, it's going to, it's a long weekend, but it should be real informative, a lot of fun. After that, we'll do our business session on the 27th, and first week in February, on the 10th, we have the next briefing session, and you can go to our website for a full listing. Martha, do you have any corrections to that?
Not a correction, an add-on, and I'm trusting Will. We all know Carlotta is leaving. Her last council meeting with us will be the 27th, she will be making her economic development report, but thoughts, opinions, input on something that we could do to recognize her, if, if we could communicate about that, we, staff can work on having that ready and available for that January 27th meeting.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that, and, item 13, closed session, was postponed for two weeks, we'll revisit that in two weeks. Any other comments, questions, before we adjourn?
I just wanted to invite everyone on Monday, MLK Day, I'm giving the reconciliation prayer at the MLK breakfast at the Sheraton, so I've got a reserved table, it's really early in the morning, but I'll be speaking at 8:15, and we'd love to have you guys there, so.
Okay. Good, good. All right, thanks for sharing with that, that with us. If there are no further items, I need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn? Aye.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's now adjourned, it's 9:02.